Good afternoon and welcome to the May 19th meeting of the Gaston County Board of Education. My name is Josh Crisp and I represent the Dallas Township and I'm proud to be the Chair of the Board. I would like to welcome everyone to our meeting. At this time, I'd like to ask Board members to introduce themselves and we'll start with Mr. Dedman.
Lee Dedman, Gastonia Township.
Robbie Lovelace, Cherryville Township.
Todd Kenlaw, South Point Township.
Jana Smith, Gastonia Township.
Doc Cherry, Vice Chair, at-large Member.
Jeff Ramsey, at-large Member.
And Mr. Stevens and Mr. Moore both excuse tonight, Mr. Stevens particularly is playing proud dad. One of his daughters is getting inducted into the Beta Club if I'm not mistaken, so congratulations to her. At this time, I'd like to ask Pastor Tripp to come forward and provide our invocation for the evening. Thank you, sir, right there.
Chairman Crisp, and I would be in trouble if I didn't say Vice Chair Cherry. It is certainly an honor and a pleasure to be here as a student at Myrtle School, Ashley Junior High School, and Hunter Huss High School. Both of those, two of the schools have been torn down, so let's leave Huss as is. And also a proud volunteer at Ashbrook where I run, helped run the chain crew on Friday night, so let us pray. Hey God, we are grateful for the seasons you give and especially thankful for this season of celebrations. Celebrations of graduation, better test scores, retirements, new beginnings, and summer break. God, we thank you for our superintendent, our teachers, administrators, support staff, police, and all those who work to make our school system the best. We thank you for this board that takes the time to serve our county and pray that you give them the wisdom and leadership to seek the needs that best serve the parents, employees, and staff of our schoolchildren and youth. God, surround our communities with peace and provide unity in our schools so that we may live out the mission to provide innovative educational opportunities for all students in a safe and nurturing learning environment. We pray that your great love will be present during this time and that you will always be our source of guidance. We ask all this in your holy name, the name of Jesus and the Holy Spirit, amen.
Thank you Pastor. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Hushard to lead us in the pledge and the character trait of the month.
Thank you, Mr. Crisp. I'd like to call forward three students from Bessemer City Middle School. We have Leanna Johnson, an eighth grader, Zayanna Crawford, a seventh grader, and Declan Lewis, a sixth grader. They're going to come up and lead us in our pledge, thank you all. Let us stand. Salute and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. And now, Mr. Crisp, I'd like to call forward Brittany Briscino. She is a fifth grader at Lowell Elementary School and she's going to talk to us tonight about the character trait of the month, self-discipline.
My name is Brittany Briscino Vella and I am a fifth grader at Lowell Elementary. The character trait for this month is self-discipline. Self-discipline means to have control over your actions and your feelings, doing what is right even when it is hard, and doing it without anybody telling you to.
Thank you, Brittany. Thank you, Dr. Hushard, and students. Our next order of business is to adopt the agenda, have a motion to adopt the agenda. Hang on a second, Ms. Dedman.
Chairman Crisp, I respectfully request that an item on the consent agenda be removed and the particular one is to substitute staff placement services for public discussion.
Okay, we'll remove that and I would like to also remove driver's education. So those will become items, 13 will be driver's education and items 14 will be substitute staff placement services. So do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as adjusted? Mr. Dedman.
Second.
Ms. Cherry on the second, any discussion on the amended agenda? No discussion, all in favor? Anybody opposed? That's unanimous, thank you. Our next order of business is here good news happening in our schools. Mr. Todd Higgins, what's our good news for this evening?
Chairman Crisp, Vice Chairman Cherry, members of the Board, and Superintendent Hushard, I am pleased to present to the Board of Education our good news for the month of May and we have a number of items to share with you this evening with it being the end of the school year. So we will begin this evening with our good news. We would like to invite Roy Powers from Cherrville High School to come forward. We are pleased to announce this evening that Roy has received a prestigious appointment to attend the United States Merchant Marine Academy in Kingsport, New York. He is one of approximately 280 appointees selected from a pool of approximately 1,700 applicants. An appointment to the academy is the equivalent of a $300,000 scholarship over a four-year period. During his time at Cherrville High School, Roy has been a member of the varsity football and baseball teams. He also has served on the Superintendent Student Advisory Council, is the senior class president, president of the Medalhead Spirit Club, and a member of the Interact Club and Fellowship of Christian Athletes. In addition, he is a member of the National Honor Society, National Technical Honor Society, and ranks in the top 10 of his class academically. During his spare time, he serves as an umpire for youth baseball, if he has spare time, right? This is a remarkable achievement that speaks volumes about Roy's hard work, dedication, and leadership. We certainly believe the United States Merchant Marine Academy is fortunate to have such a talented and committed student from Gaston County Schools coming to the academy. We would like to congratulate Roy on this prestigious honor and wish him the best of luck as he continues his education at the United States Merchant Marine Academy. And Ms. Lovelace has the presentation.
My goodness, Roy. I don't know if I'm the right one to do this. Got to get ahead first. Oh my goodness, I've known this young man ever since he lay about two pounds. I've watched him grow up, his family, they're absolutely wonderful, Matt and Becca Powers. You can't ask for a better young man. And I know you said we like to think that the United States Merchant Marine Academy has a good person. I know they have the best learning environment here. It's absolutely amazing, all your accomplishments, son. I watched him all through, all through his elementary school, his middle school, and high school, and he's absolutely phenomenal. And he is a wonderful athlete, let me tell you. Baseball was awesome this year, I didn't get to come and watch it, but I listened and I was most, most impressed. But this is a certificate of recognition, Roy, for your military appointment, United States Merchant Marine Academy. And on behalf of the entire Board, we are so, so proud of you and so thankful that your parents are in Gaston County Schools. I mean, it runs deep, it really, really does. So Becca and Matt, thank you so much for giving this young man to Gaston County Schools. And we're going to be praying for you, and I know this day's going to roll around, July 3rd, is that right, Mom? But we're going to be praying for that transition for you, Roy. If you'll turn this this way, we're going to get a picture.
We'll have Roy's parents join us and representatives from Cherrville High School for a photograph.
Yes, sir, thank you, sir.
Next, we are excited to recognize some very talented students who were nominated for the Best Actor and Best Actress in the Bloomy Awards. The Bloomies is a program that recognizes excellence in high school theater arts in the greater Charlotte area. As I introduce the students, we would like for them to come forward. From Ashbrook High School, please welcome Jelani Young, who played Patrick Starr in the SpongeBob Musical. His co-star and Best Actress nominee Andrea Valesquez, who played SpongeBob SquarePants, also received a nomination. We understand Andrea could not be with us tonight, but we'd like for Jelani to come forward if he is here. If he's not here, we'll make sure we get his certificate to him. Next, we have from the Highland School of Technology, we'd like to recognize Jace Walsh, who played Leaf Coney Bear in the 25th Annual Putnam County Spelling Bee. And we also have Lynn Mercado, who portrayed Mitch Mahoney and Dan Schwartz in the 25th Annual Putnam County Spelling Bee. These are students from the Highland School of Technology. And from North Gaston High School, we have Trenton Taylor Bowlen, who played Damian Hubbard in Mean Girls, the high school version. And also recognized from North Gaston is Bailey Griggs. She took on the role of Regina George in Mean Girls. And unfortunately Bailey could not be with us this evening, is our student from North Gaston here. We've got Shannon Four here, she's the theater teacher and does an excellent job at North Gaston. And the principal from North Gaston, Paige Willis, and we'll make sure that Ms. Four gets those certificates. And we want everyone of you to know that each high school participating in the Bloomy Awards, those high schools get a nominee for Best Actor and Best Actress. And the, there are six finalists that are chosen for those categories and the finalists go on to be featured during the Bloomy Award Ceremony. Gaston County Schools has experienced success in the highly competitive Bloomy Awards Program with student performances winning honors over the years for set construction, costumes, best musical, best supporting actor. And that is in addition to award nominations in categories such as Best Direction, Best Choreography, and Best Ensemble. Students also have won scholarships that are presented through the Bloomy Awards. The Bloomies were held last night at the Belk Theater in Charlotte and our nominees performed during the opening and closing number of the show. And like any theater performance, let's give them a big round of applause. And Ms. Smith will make the presentation.
I just wanted to say thank you. You are leading the way for performing arts. As a mother of a fifth grade Santa Claus this year, I can say I am truly blessed that there are programs that have enriched students that are standing up, doing great performances, and giving those young'uns something to look up to. So y'all are role models, I hope that you know that. Are you going to do anything more with your acting careers? Hollywood, okay. There you go, Jace.
And Lynn. Thank you.
Absolutely, we're going to take a picture.
I think there are like five different cameras on the floor.
Yeah, it's not all of them. Okay, yeah.
We'd like for school representatives, parents, parents and school representatives to come forward to join us for a group picture.
There's one more. Oh, we got someone that showed up.
Excellent, excellent.
Jelani, you missed all of the announcements, but we're proud of you just the same. Thank you so much for making it.
Y'all just hold where you're at, Ms. Four, will you join us for this picture to represent your students? I'll hand you the certificates from North Gaston, we'll have those this way. Now, we would like to bring attention to the School Resource Officer from Forestview High School, who was recently named the Officer of the Quarter by the Gaston County Police Department. And we would like to ask Officer Jamie Burr to come forward at this time. Officer Burr goes above and beyond to support the students and staff at Forestview, both during the school day and after hours. He has earned the respect of administrator, staff, and students by building strong relationships and working hard to keep the campus safe. One example of his dedication was when he stepped in to ensure the basketball team returned safely after an incident involving some agitated fans following the bus. I guess Forestview won, right? In addition to his role as an SRO, Officer Burr played a key role in launching the Gaston County Police Foundation, which supports the department and its families. Please join us in congratulating Jamie Burr as the Officer of the Quarter, our School Resource Officer at Forestview High School. Congratulations. Ms. Cherry has the presentation.
On behalf of our Superintendent, our Chair, and the rest of the Board, Jamie, we can't thank you enough for what you do. And I've got a brag on him and all of our officers. We are one of the few systems in the state that actually have a full staff at all of our schools. And that is an honor and a blessing in every way. We are always ranked very high as safe schools and it's because of these folks. They don't have to take these jobs, they choose to take these jobs. They're not forced to work on that. Ms. Matt Gensley, he's in charge of, come on up here. He's in charge of all, of all the SROs, so, yes, Ms. Nelson's going to come, come on. So we are extremely fortunate to have them on our campuses. They go above and beyond every single day, not knowing what they're going to face. And the kids rely on them just as much as their adults do. So I can't thank them enough and congratulations for winning this award and God bless you and thank you very much.
Thank you. The officers are kind and well, there we go. Thank you. Family?
Yes, yes. No, that's okay.
Next, we are proud to introduce Kristelle Corpin from Stewart W. Kramer High School and ask her to come forward at this time. Ms. Corpin is here with us this evening because she has been named the EPI Educational Partners International Teacher of the Year for North Carolina. Out of more than 100 nominations, Ms. Corpin was selected as one of the top three finalists and of the three finalists, she captured the top honor as North Carolina's EPI Teacher of the Year. She joined Gaston County Schools in the 2021-22 school year and currently teaches Biology and Forensic Science at Stewart W. Kramer. In the past, she has taught Anatomy and Physiology and Physical Science. Ms. Corpin was also honored with the Chick-fil-A Leader Academy Scholar Award for her outstanding leadership and service to the Stewart W. Kramer community. Karen Archer, our new teacher support facilitator who is with us this evening, shares that Ms. Corpin plays a key role in supporting our international teachers. She helps with professional development, leads monthly tip sessions, serves as an EPI liaison, and organizes cultural events. Karen describes Ms. Corpin as a natural leader, well-rounded, knowledgeable, and... and someone who builds strong, positive relationships with students, teachers, and administrators. We also have representatives of EPI with us this evening to help celebrate this occasion. And we appreciate you being with us. And we are very proud to recognize Kristelle Corpin tonight for her excellence in education and the positive impact she makes each day. And Ms. Cherry, you have this presentation.
Kristelle. Wow, congratulations, congratulations. This is another thing that we get right. We could not do what we do without our EPI teachers. They fill needed positions and they fill them well. Biology, teaches the higher classes. And I think she, he has some students here too, right? So, we're gonna call them up in just a second. But phenomenal, full of people that we get through EPI. And we could not do what we do without them. So, congratulations for winning this honor. Thank you for being in Gaston County. And we're just thrilled. So, we've got to give her a big round of applause. Just tell us a couple of things about what y'all think about her, if you would do that. Well, they know her better than, yes, come on. And we'll get pictures too.
Biology, Forensics, Anatomy, a lot.
Here, balance me out, come on. Anything you want to say, because this is phenomenal.
Her class was one of the best I've ever taken. It was really engaging and fun. And I felt like I learned a lot. And it was really interesting. She was just a great teacher.
She's just super positive every day. No matter how you're feeling, she just like uplifts you.
You're making me cry right now.
Now, we'll give you a piece of candy.
I had her for Biology and she was one of the best teachers I had. She taught us a lot. And every single day we walked into the class, she had a smile on and was ready to teach us in any way she could.
I had her for Anatomy and Forensic Science. And she has really been a role model for me throughout high school. She's just so positive every day. And even if I was having a bad day, she would really just shine a light. So, I thank you so much for that.
Isn't that the perfect example of a perfect teacher?
Thank you for embracing us international teachers. Gaston County is one of the counties that welcome us and friendly counties. So, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. All right, who else is, her principal is here. Karen, anybody else?
My work mom.
Celeste Sadler, our director for TIPS.
Stuart Kramer family.
Thank you, students. Good to see you those kind words.
Board members, I mentioned we had representatives of EPI with us tonight providing some coverage and publicity for our EPI Teacher of the Year. Members of the board, next, we would like to invite the Stuart W. Kramer High School Battle of the Books Team to come forward. Joining us are team members Ellery Lamp, Kayla Matthews, Lizzie Jane Ross, Anne Sproul, Piper Summy, Molly Sutphen, and Bahadra Venita, along with their coach and school library media coordinator Vanessa Griffith. These outstanding students won the local Battle of the Books competition, went on to win the regional contest, and finished third in the state competition, which is an incredible achievement. The team members are encouraged, but not required, to read all 16 selected books that are part of the Battle of the Books competition. This includes fiction and nonfiction titles and a total of more than 5,225 pages. The team met twice a week before school and as often as possible on Friday afternoons. During competitions, each round includes 12 questions. And teams can score extra points by correctly answering questions missed by the opposing team. Ms. Griffith has shared that what makes this team's success especially impressive is that these students always stay busy with band, theater scouts, the Gaston County Public Library Advisory Board, part-time jobs, multiple athletic teams, and you name it. Their commitment, teamwork, and love of reading are truly inspiring. And we are proud to celebrate their local, regional, and state-level accomplishments tonight in the Battle of the Books academic program. Congratulations. And Mr. Ramsey has this presentation.
Congratulations, Jeanne Lee. I think we got girl power here. We always known as a man, the girls are the smartest ones. So, on behalf of the Board of Education, we'd like to thank all of y'all. Great, great job. I don't know if we've ever had a third place in Battle of Books, but that's huge. Because I've been around 16 years, so I don't remember. So, I'd like to give out these certificates for you. Molly. Yeah, okay. Yeah, Piper.
That's me.
Oh, okay. Anne. Thank you. Lizzie Jane. Well, thank y'all for a great job. Are y'all seniors?
I am. But not all of us.
So, there'll be three back, coming back the next year? More? Oh, good, good. Y'all might win it all. Well, thank y'all for what you do. Thank you for your media center and leader for what she does and all the hours she puts in with y'all.
Yeah, Ms. Griffith does an amazing job at everything she does. She's awesome.
Yeah, the media center is the hub of school. Thank y'all.
Principal and any parents or other school representatives that may be with us? Next, we are proud to celebrate Stuart W. Kramer High School's first-ever state championship team. And at this time, and they are down the hall, we would like to ask the boys' golf team to come forward. Here they come. This is the state championship golf team from Stuart W. Kramer High School. Joining us are team members Lane Croats, Aiden Vergosco, Britton Steed, Drew Mercer, Ian Irish, Tripp Stacy, Luke Stevens, along with head coach Ben McMillan and assistant coach Matthew Jackson. Last week at Gates Four Golf and Country Club in Fayetteville, Stuart W. Kramer captured its first High School Athletic Association Boys Golf Championship. And it's the school's first team state title by defending two-time defending champion Terry Sanford High School in a dramatic playoff. Sophomore Lane Croats led the storm, finishing third in the individual standings with a three-under-par total of 141 at 72 and 69. And senior Aiden Vergosco also impressed and shot a two-under-70 in the final round to earn a ninth-place individual finish. Golf has been a strong program at Stuart W. Kramer in recent years with multiple conference and regional championships and a runner-up finish in 2023. And just last year, Rich Wills, who is now playing golf at Clemson, won the 3A Individual State Championship. So, tonight, we are celebrating the success of the Stuart W. Kramer Golf Team and congratulating these outstanding student athletes and their coaches on making us proud as state champions. Congratulations.
Recognize each other, you, the Board of Education, for your big accomplishment. Before I start, who's the senior? Is it Kurt Hayden?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Wow. Y'all know the story about the legacy of golf at Kramer, right?
No, they don't.
The first golf course was built in 1922. And in Kramer, there'd been four golf courses built in a four-mile radius. The world found Kramer. Stuart Kramer High School was built on Lakewood Golf Course. So, y'all were destined to do this event. And every year it started to build up. So, you might be like the predecessor of Forestview High School, but ran about three or four back-to-back. So, y'all have an accomplishment. I'd like to recognize your coach, McMillan. He does a fantastic job as being the golf coach. And his leadership is shown with y'all guys and character too. So, let me hand out the rest of him. Drew. Lane. Britton. Tripp. Luke. Tell me the story about the Western North Carolina Contest. Y'all were down 12 strokes in the back nine. And somebody hit an eagle to carry it. Y'all wanna tell them that story? Because y'all, I heard y'all stormed back to win.
So, as a team, we were like 14 over on the front nine. And we knew we had to lock in because we were, what, like sixth place? Something like that? We were, not, didn't play great. And in the back nine, we all shot, I think we shot like two or three over as a team on the back. So, we came back. And then on the last hole, I used the last hole to like get, put us in the lead. Yeah, I didn't know it at the time. But that was.
But y'all won by one spread, right? So, you won the, that's great senior leadership. And I know it's passed down from the Wills team. So, no seniors next year, so the juniors will have to step it up. But we're really proud of you. Thank you for what you've done. And Peter.
To bounce out kind of trophies, either Lane can take it or, there you go. That's the big one, right? So, we can, or Amy, you can come where Lane is and then we just switch. Lane, you can hold it, there you go.
One more. Who asked the principal and the athletic director and others from Stuart W. Kramer who are here? Some parents, if parents are here, we'll just create a big picture. Yes, parents in the audience want to join us for this picture? We'd be happy to have you with us. Members of the board, at this time, we would like to recognize two students from South Point High School. We would like to invite James Dover and Rex Dover from South Point to come forward at this time. This is James Dover and Rex Dover from South Point High School. We are recognizing them tonight because on Saturday, May the 10th, the Dover Brothers made school history by winning the 3A Boys Doubles Tennis State Championship. They defeated the doubles team from East Lincoln High School with a final score of 6-3, 6-2. This victory is even more special because last year, James and Rex lost in the first round to the team that went on to become the state runners-up. They used that experience to grow. They've worked hard all year and they came back even stronger, earning a state championship ring to match the one they won last year as part of the 3A Dual Team State Championship team. Then, on Saturday, they added a third ring as the school repeated and claimed back-to-back dual-team state championships. And we'll share more about that in just a few minutes. James and Rex are no strangers to recognition. They've both been honored by the Board of Education before as District Spelling Bee Champions, and they continue to make us proud. You may recall that the board honored James for earning the prestigious Coolidge Scholarship, one of only five awarded nationwide. And this fall, James will take the next step in his educational journey as he heads to Yale University. But tonight, we are celebrating our state tennis champions on all of their achievements. Congratulations. And Mr. Kenlaw has the presentation.
Where'd you guys get this height at? Last time I saw you guys, you were about this tall. But you're growing. That's awesome. I want to say on behalf of the board, appreciate your dedication to athletics and academics. Good luck on that, my man. I know your mom and dad are proud. Good to see you, Ms. Dover. But I'm so proud of you guys. I'm a Red Raider, and I know that you guys are Red Raiders. You're gonna be Red Raiders for life. But we're so thankful that you guys compete. And you're gonna have to find another partner next year, right? Have you got somebody in mind? All right, that sounds good. Well, hopefully, we can be back up here next year and defend that title. I look forward to handing you guys back out your recognition. So, good luck, congratulations. I'm proud of you. I'm sure your parents. I'm proud of you, I'm sure your parents are proud of you, and the board is proud of you guys. Thank you for representing Gaston County Schools.
We want to have the representatives from South Point High School that are with us to come forward and be a part of the picture. And I know the principal is here, and there may be some others, the athletic director, maybe some others from South Point, please join us up here. Mom, you want to jump in that picture?
Yeah, let...
Oh, no, no, no. Don't be like...
They need help.
Take the picture.
If you guys would step around here, the board would like to...
You, too.
Come on.
Congratulations.
Great job. She's so proud of y'all, too.
Guys, don't go very far because we're going to talk a little bit more about that state championship I mentioned a few minutes ago. We would like to invite the tennis team from South Point High School to come forward. We'll welcome them into the room, and we are excited to share with you that the South Point High School has repeated as the 3A Dual Team State Champions in Boys Tennis. The team includes James Dover and Rex Dover, Brandon Cunningham, who was named the most valuable player of the dual-team championships, Tyler Cunningham, Caleb Dellinger, Asher Dover, Spencer Hollifield, Austin Kellogg, Justin Kohler, Andrew Langley, Samuel Morgan, Shiv Patel, Shin Ro, and Griffin Williams. The championship came down to the final doubles match at the High School Athletic Association 3A Boys Dual Team Tennis State Championship held on Saturday at the Burlington Tennis Center. South Point and Carboro High Schools split the six single matches, but South Point pulled ahead by winning two doubles matches to secure a 5-4 victory. In singles play, Shiv Patel and James Dover earned wins at the number-one and number-two spots, while Tyler Cunningham won at number-five. In doubles, Patel teamed with Brandon Cunningham for an 8-5 win, and James Dover partnered with his brother Rex to win 8-2. Additionally, Rex Dover was honored as the 3A Men's Tennis North Carolina Farm Bureau Sportsmanship Award winner, and we are very proud of our back-to-back state tennis champions from South Point High School. Congratulations.
Well, on behalf of the board, we want to congratulate all you guys. We know there's a repeat, is there going to be a three-peat? I sure hope so. We're expecting big things out of you guys. I know there's a lot of good quality tennis players here, and I'm sure that you guys will defend your title just like you did this year. I'm thankful for you guys. As I've said to other past state champions, this is an area where not a lot of people can say they were state champions. A lot of people in Gaston County play sports, and not many folks get to say they were state champions, so that's something you should be proud of and wear with pride. That's a great accomplishment. I know I competed in Gaston County school sports all through middle school and high school. We got close, but I never was a state champion, so congratulations to you guys. Like I said, I hope that you're all back up here next year, and I can hand these awards back out to you guys as a three-peat. Got a lot here, so forgive me, I'll go as fast as I can. Griffin Williams. There you go. Shin Ro. Not here, okay. I'll let you hold that for the coach. Shiv Patel. Did I pronounce that correctly? Samuel Morgan. Andrew Langley. Do you play basketball, too? Good daylight, you boys, I've been in the basketball team. Justin Kohler. Austin Kellogg. Not here. Spencer Hollifield. Asher Dover. Rex Dover. There you go. James Dover. I thought I had them all three in order. Caleb Dellinger. Tyler Cunningham. Brandon Cunningham. Did we get everybody? Once again, congratulations, men, we're proud of you, thank you, Coach, for the hard work and the effort. Again, I hope to see you guys back up here for a three-peat next year. We'd love to congratulate you on that, too.
They want to put the tall kids in the back and carry bells.
If you're over 6'2", back up.
Anybody up, audience? Young lady anchors?
Representatives from South Point, if they'll join us for the picture. With our celebration and focus on athletics tonight, we would like to take time to recognize the people working behind the scenes to make our athletic program successful, and I'm talking about our school athletic directors, and we have a number of our athletic directors with us, and we'd like to invite them to come forward at this time, our school athletic directors. We all know that our athletic directors are the heart of school sports. They run the entire athletic program, hire coaches, build game schedules, and make sure every sport follows the rules. They also manage budgets, care for athletic facilities, and help build school spirit through sports. Their responsibilities include making sure coaches and athletes are properly trained, keeping student athletes safe, and checking that players are eligible to compete. Our athletic directors also connect our schools with the community by building strong relationships with local supporters. Their days can be long, especially during all of the sports seasons. Even when school is out, their work often continues, so tonight, we are here to say thank you to our athletic directors. We also would like to recognize Chad Duncan, who is our county athletic director. Mr. Duncan was recently inducted into the Hall of Fame for the North Carolina Athletic Directors Association, and two of our athletic directors, Forestview High School Athletic Director Brian Horn and East Gaston High School Athletic Director Haley Stewart, they received the North Carolina Athletic Directors Association Citation Award at the State Athletic Directors Conference. This award honors athletic directors who have made a big impact on their school, the conference, and region within their first five years in athletic leadership. And in addition, Ms. Stewart was named a Certified Athletic Administrator by the National Interscholastic Athletic Administrators Association. So tonight, we are congratulating Mr. Dunn, Mr. Horn, and Ms. Stewart, and all of our athletic directors for the work that they do to give us championship sports here in Gaston County Schools. We have one of our celebrate plaques that Chairman Crisp will present, and I maybe just present it to whoever's standing in the middle. How's that sound?
No, I'm going to go in the middle and holler phone once. You get to hold that. So guys, thank you. As Todd said, you guys are the backbone of our programs, we know you're there long nights, early mornings, weekends, so without you and what your dedication, what you put into our sports program, we couldn't be successful, so thank you very much for what you do.
We'll ask Mr. Duncan to join us for the photograph. Thank you, guys. Y'all, if y'all just take a moment to announce, tell us who you are and the schools you represent. We want to give a shout-out to the schools.
Jack Ashford High School. Willie Tagg, Best of City High School.
Jess Martin, North Gaston High School.
Mike Patton, Stuart W. Kramer High School.
Brian Horn, Forestview High School.
Matt Powers, Cherryville High School.
Brian Nichols, Hobart Middle School.
Markeith Redd, Southwest Middle School.
Kent Hyde, South Point High School.
Chad Duncan, County A.D.
And Mr. Chairman, with that, that completes all of our good news for the month of May.
Todd, I think you got to go out and find a few more people to join the audience, this looks bare out there. Yeah, thank you for putting that together, Mr. Higgins, we have a lot of good things going on in our system, thank you. Next item on our agenda is our Classroom Moment. The Classroom Moment gives the board an opportunity to see examples of good things happening in our schools every day. Today, our Classroom Moment will be led by Dr. Brian Denton and Kevin Dorn, and they will inform us about graduation events for the class of 2025. As always, it's a very exciting time for our graduates. Gentlemen?
Good evening, members of the board, Chairman Crisp, Vice Chairman Cherry, Dr. Hushard. Dr. Denton and I are extremely excited to share tonight's Classroom Moment, which captures one of the traditions we've established for our graduating class, the Senior Walks. This event allows our seniors to return to their former elementary and middle schools, walking the halls for one last time in their caps and gowns, greeted by younger students, former teachers, and staff who played a part in their journey. It's a powerful moment of reflection, celebration, and inspiration, not only for our seniors and the teachers that helped them along the way, but for the younger students that cheer them on. The Senior Walk is just one of the many traditions that makes this time of year special, from college, military, and job day signings, to star teacher and student awards, scholarship nights, class pictures, senior sunsets, and much, much more. Each event is designed to recognize the hard work and achievements of the class of 2025 as they prepare to graduate. So at this time, if you will watch our short video showcasing this year's Senior Walks.
Just starting out at the beginning, you wouldn't think that, wow, I'm really here now, because I remember watching the Senior Walk when I was at this school, and now that I'm taking it in and realizing it, it's an experience.
We get to reflect on how we have changed in our life from being elementary students to being high school students.
It made me emotional a lot because they just like are going to experience what we experienced, but just in different ways, and then just seeing how much we have grown over the past year, so it was really emotional.
It really was like a full-circle moment. I got back to my school and was able to like, be like, I made it. Our school and our staff really care about us and everything that we do, and they're so proud of us.
Just to be able to, you know, see these kids come by, shake their hands, be excited to see you, and just, it's like a feeling of fulfillment.
Bittersweet, I'm not ready to say goodbye to a lot of people, but I'm also excited for the new stages of my life.
We want to thank our communications department for helping produce that and capture all those exciting moments. The class of 2025 will be graduating this week. We will have more than 2,000 students graduating with their diplomas from Gaston County Schools. And I would say, as a former high school principal, even more importantly, is that they have plans for after graduation. They will be going to colleges across the country, you've heard about so many of those. They will be enlisting in all the branches of our military and joining our workforce. And we know that these things are possible because of what they've gotten from Gaston County Schools. They've had outstanding educators along the way, millions of dollars for the class of 2025 in scholarship money, partnerships with our business industry and the military, and then, of course, always the family and friends who have supported them along the way. The class of 2025's journey actually began in August of 2012, and these are some archival photos that show you kindergarten students that year who are graduating from high school this year. You may notice things like name tags, locks, glue sticks, and the carpet in the kindergarten classroom. And now, in May of 2025, we've moved on, caps and gowns, colleges, and careers. As Kevin said, they walked the halls where they first started, and that one last walk down the hall where they will end this week, when they move towards the stage, and a few last steps to cross that graduation finish line, which are really just the first steps as they move on to their future. The class of 2025 is now inspiring everyone who will come next, all the way down to the class of 2036, which is our current kindergarten class. We chose this as the feature for this Classroom Moment because graduation is the ultimate Classroom Moment. It is the result of all the other Classroom Moments you've heard about this year, and so many more that happened over the years. So we congratulate the class of 2025 for everything they've accomplished, we wish them all the best as their next journey begins, and look forward to all the success we know they are capable of achieving. Thank you so much.
Obviously, the state legislature thought we needed that type of facility. It probably will cost close to $60 million by the time it's complete. Our county has changed and has a different perspective, particularly with theater arts. At this point, we have two full-time teachers in the county schools at the hospital level for our, out of our 13 high schools. 20 years ago, we had 13 theater and dance teachers. Our district system has gone a little bit of a different direction as far as a comprehensive theater arts program. They're extremely valuable to our students. Our competition, the charter schools in the Gaston Day and Gaston Christian, beat us at the state conference level for this year's Blooming Awards. Our kids did great, but we still have something to prove. I don't like our competition beating us. If we're looking at the state championships, then we're looking at Stuart Kramer, over the years, has won six at the state championship level. South Point won four. So it's very competitive, but I want us to have that for all 13 schools. If you look at the three that were represented tonight, two out of the three had a full-time teacher at that level. And you're competing across over 16 counties. Now, you say, well, why am I here? Okay? Because certainly Todd did a wonderful job, and we have great students, but look how many. We had 10 schools not represented. At least, I know for South Point, there is no program. All right? I know it's a funding thing, you're going to have to really search for people, but there, I would certainly think they should be out there. We only have one student that I'm aware of in the county going to School of the Arts next year in theater, and that's not one of ours, and we should have those. I taught at South Point for 15 years. Our staff and students were all involved in the theater arts program. It was an excellent opportunity for them. Now there's nothing. My son was there. He did a lot of the technical background for the productions. When he went to NC State, that experience enabled him to be able to make videos for the football team, and at least one was shown on ESPN2. So that tells you what we had. I think my grandchildren, one who's going to South Point next year, one who's there, I don't know that they're interested in theater arts, but we have talent. We don't have opportunity for everybody, and I would like that to be for everybody. Once again, I want us to be the leaders. I don't want anybody beating us at the state level. So please consider what we could do to add to that, add funding. Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is approval and correction of minutes. I need a motion to approve minutes from our April 1st, 2025 joint budget meeting with the county commissioners, as well as the minutes from our April 14th, 2025 regular meeting. Do I hear a motion? Motion, Ms. Smith, second, Mr. Dedman. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Next item on the agenda is a report from our Operations Committee, and I'd like Ms. Cherry to read that, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Operations Committee met at the Central Office Boardroom here on Monday, May 5th at 8:30 a.m. The committee consists of myself, Chairman Brent Moore, Lee Dedman, and Todd Kenball. Our agenda discussion included the following. Budget updates. The total increase in our local budget request from the county for fiscal year '25-'26 is $4.5 million. The county held a work session meeting on May 13th of '25, and a budget presentation was presented to the county, will be presented to the county by the county manager, excuse me. The county's regular meeting is scheduled for May 27th, when the commissioners will vote on their budget. At this time, the state budget has not been finalized for next year. Infinite campus. We are continuing to transition from Power School to Infinite Campus for our student information system. The transition is a state-driven mandate. Meetings are also, are almost completed with all departments who use Power School to prepare for the conversion of Infinite Campus with DPI support. Data managers' monthly support meetings are in process as we speak. Media center updates. Highlights were presented about our school media centers. We also had community members present a picture book to every elementary school. Carpet is in place at the New Greer Middle School, and the space is incredible. Books have been ordered for that library. Warlock Academy now has a library, and books for grade 6 through 12 are on the shelves. Greer Middle School allowances. Due to a higher-than-anticipated increase in costs associated with rock excavation and the emergency responder system, we are recommending an additional $500,000 of allowances for Phase II. These funds will come from the bond proceeds. This is on the consent agenda, as will be presented as a change order tonight. Armstrong property purchase. Due diligence is complete, and no disqualifying issues were found. We recommend approval for the purchase of this property for $1.5 million, pending approval of the purchase price by the county commissioners. The funding will come from the bond proceeds. This item is on the consent agenda as well. School bond updates. On April 22nd, '25, the county commissioners appropriated $110 million in school bonds. This is the final installment of the $250 million bond offering. The county also appropriated $4.2 million in interest from the $80 million bonds. In addition, the following items were discussed by the committee and recommended for approval on the consent agenda tonight. Replacement of Axe Jace controllers, facility system services, Greer Middle School graphics, substitute staff placement services, annual engagement letter with independent auditors. And again, these will be on the consent agenda for approval tonight. Other business in discussion. An update was given on student transfers. Students requesting a transfer into a school that is already at capacity will go on a wait list. The next meeting will be held on Monday, June 2nd, beginning at 8:30. And that's my, our report.
Thank you, Ms. Cherry. Our next report is from our Curriculum and Instruction Committee. Chairman of that is Jeff Ramsey.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to ask Ms. Smith to provide us her report tonight.
The Curriculum and Instruction Committee met at the Central Office Boardroom on Monday, May 5th, 2025, at 11:30 a.m. The committee consists of Chairman Jeff Ramsey, Robbie Lovelace, which was absent during this meeting, Janice Smith, and A.M. Stevens III. Our agenda discussion included the following. Driver's education. Due to a significant rise in operational costs, North Carolina Driving School is requesting an increase in their pricing structure to ensure the continued delivery of past standards of education safety for the 2025-2026 school year. Post-meeting note. Staff was able to negotiate a $10 per student increase for this year, which the district will absorb. The price will remain the same for the students, but this is being pulled for further discussion, so it will no longer be on the consent agenda. Student transfers. Students requiring a transfer into a school that has closed its transfers due to capacity constraints will be placed on a wait list. Substitute staff placement services, ESS Southeast. ESS Southeast LLC is a third-party group that will find and place substitute teachers in schools. Substitutes will be contracted employees for the provider and be eligible for benefits. This will take a tremendous burden off the building administrators and teachers, and allow them to focus on teaching and learning in the classroom. The initial commitment is for one year to see if this proves successful. This item is being pulled from the consent agenda for further discussion. Advanced teacher roles and instructional coach position updates. Ms. Johnisha Alfred Simmons is the new advanced teacher and instructional coach director. This position is included in the state grant. Candidates are being interviewed with a goal of having positions filled by the end of May. 2025-2026 Career College Promise CCP Books and Fees Plan. Beginning fall 2025, students will be eligible for reimbursement for books when they successfully complete a course with a final grade of C or higher. College fees will continue to be paid for. There will be a process in place for students who need financial assistance with purchasing books. A parent notification letter is being developed. The committee reviewed the federal program's proposed budget for Title I, II, III, and IV. The federal grant application is on the consent agenda and comes by recommendation of the committee. Data pathways deep dive. Information was presented on K-12 pathways with a focus on grades 3 through 5 math. The following items are on the consent agenda for approval. Educator's handbook, the federal grant application. The next Curriculum and Instruction Committee will be held on Monday, June 2nd, beginning at 11:30 in the Central Office Boardroom. And this concludes our notes.
Thank you, Ms. Smith, and thank you, as always, to both committees for the hard work you do to keep our system moving. Next on our agenda is a report from the School Nutrition and their annual report, and this is an information item.
Members of the board, thank you so much for your time tonight while I shared the School Nutrition Annual Report. It's a brief report, but it's important. So we will continue and have been running the National School Breakfast and Lunch Program, our After-School Snack Program, which is through Child and Adult Care Feeding, summer feeding, which we're about to embark on right now. And the participation this year has remained about the same. You remember last year, we went to many more CEP schools, Community Eligibility schools, and that increased the participation, or the number of children who eat breakfast and lunch with us daily. That has remained fairly stable. We may be up a few meals at breakfast, 10,500, and over 20,000 lunches served. So that's the highest we've been, but it's holding steady, which is really good. Just a reminder about community eligibility. We have 45 schools participating, which is a good majority of our schools. With those programs, no applications are required for eligibility in the school meal program. So that means that all families in those schools are eligible for free breakfast and lunch, regardless of their income. It reduces, there's a lot of benefits to that. It reduces the amount of debt that the district incurs, because when families don't pay for meals or can't pay for meals, we continue to feed children, and the district incurs debt. So you will see that our debt has gone down tremendously because kids are eating free. And it eliminates the need for a complimentary meal, and that's the meal that we give children after they have met the deadline or the limit that they can charge up to. So after that point, we provide a meal, and we have to charge the district for that meal. So that has gone completely, you know, very low. Talk about summer feeding a little bit. We have nine school sites that will begin on June 9th, that will be feeding hot breakfast and lunch in those sites, as we do every year, through the month of June. We have six community sites, and you may remember last year, we started a new program that was allowed through USDA, which is non-congregate feeding. And what that means in the summer is that we can provide meal bundles for families to take home. Last year, we did four- and five-day bundles. This year, we're going to do seven-day bundles because it was such a huge success. You remember, in the summer feeding program, children have to come and eat at the site, which is sometimes a hardship for some families, either they can't get there every day for breakfast and for lunch, or they're afraid to let their children come unattended, and they're at work. So this program allows us to give meals for seven days. They can choose four days or seven. If they can't store that amount of food, they can take it home, and they can use that over the seven-day period. It's a new program. We embarked on it last year as soon as it was allowed, and we're expanding this year to six sites. And we've already got families signing up, so if you call the School Nutrition Office, you can sign up for that program. It's going to be awesome. We also have 50 to 60 camp sites. Every day, we're still getting more sites that are signing up. So those are community sites that we deliver bag lunches to, cold breakfast and cold lunch, that may be a YMCA or a childcare facility that needs meals in the summer. So that's an awful lot of meals we serve there. The summer meal program is so beneficial, not only to our families, but it also keeps School Nutrition people employed over the summer. So it's a win-win for everybody, and I'm always glad when we expand it. Highlights for this year. We have maintained a positive fund balance. As you know, School Nutrition is an enterprise fund. We maintain our own finances, and we pay our own bills, so to speak. I will say, it's not as huge a fund balance as we've had in the past. As you know, the cost of food supplies and labor has increased, but we are holding our own, so I'm happy to say that. We are able to maintain our staffing levels. I speak to directors in lots of districts over the course of the year. That is a struggle to keep staffing. I have 400 employees, and we are pretty much staffed in every school. Now, sometimes, you know, we have people that are out, and we try to fill those with subpositions, but we are staffed, and we do not have a big turnover, so I'm proud of that fact as well. We continue to expand our farm, and know many of you have seen our farm. If you haven't, please come and take a look. It's wonderful, and it's expanding. It's been a long process, but we are finally getting there. It was originally a grassroots collaboration between Gaston County Schools and Cooperative Extension, and it's grown. We have a company that runs the farm for us now. They're called Deep Roots. Some of you came to the dinner the other night, met one of the owners of Deep Roots, and it's located right on our property at Central Kitchen. As you can see, these are the berries we picked a couple of weeks ago. They were the most delicious berries you could ever taste. We compared them to berries that we bought locally through Department of Defense, because those are fresh and local as well, but there was no comparison. So we're still learning that what grows well on our land, and strawberries are really one of those items. So far, we've piloted lots of products, because like I said, we have to see what grows well. We've grown lots of lettuce, tomatoes, cucumbers, collard greens, which we didn't know that students would love. They love them. So we're putting in lots more for the coming fall season, because those grow well in the spring and the fall, when the kids come back. But over the summer, we'll be using tomatoes, cucumbers, and all that in the summer feeding program as well. We are highly anticipating our hydroponic greenhouse, which is going to provide lettuce grown hydroponically year-round. You know, at Central Kitchen, we buy lots of lettuce, because we make really nice entree salads and side salad. So we're getting lettuce out of the garden, but it's not year-round, and it's not enough. So the greenhouse should do that for us. This is a schematic of kind of how our building looks. That's the building where we live and where the production facility is, and that's the way it looks out in the farm. Some community outreach. We continue to provide meals for the Aspire Program at those schools, and Head Start, we feed Head Start out of our Central Kitchen. Hopefully, that continues, program continues, because it's great to feed those little ones. And those are our community partners as well. For next year, I hope school meals will be, continue to be funded through the National School Lunch Program. We compared them to berries that we bought locally through Department of Defense, because those are fresh and local as well, but there was no comparison. So we're still learning that what grows well on our land, and strawberries are really one of those items. So far, we've piloted lots of products, because like I said, we have to see what grows well. We've grown lots of lettuce, tomatoes, cucumbers, collard greens, which we didn't know that students would love. They love them. So we're putting in lots more for the coming fall season, because those grow well in the spring and the fall, when the kids come back. But over the summer, we'll be using tomatoes, cucumbers, and all that in the summer feeding program as well. We are highly anticipating our hydroponic greenhouse, which is going to provide lettuce grown hydroponically year-round. You know, at Central Kitchen, we buy lots of lettuce, because we make really nice entree salads and side salad. So we're getting lettuce out of the garden, but it's not year-round, and it's not enough. So the greenhouse should do that for us. This is a schematic of kind of how our building looks. That's the building where we live and where the production facility is, and that's the way it looks out in the farm. Some community outreach. We continue to provide meals for the Aspire Program at those schools, and Head Start, we feed Head Start out of our Central Kitchen. Hopefully, that continues, the program continues, because it's great to feed those little ones. And those are our community partners as well. For next year, I hope school meals will continue to be funded through the National School Lunch Program. Again, if you're in a non-CEP school, have to apply for free lunch, doesn't mean you won't get it. You can still apply, and you'll be selected based on your income, family income. And applications for that will be available on July 1st. I also have an action item tonight, as every year, we need your approval for the bids for 25-26 that are over $90,000. So that's in your folder for. And I have a very, very short video that Ensign State did about our farm last spring, but it just came out. See how I can play this. Let's see. Do I just hit this? You're going to do it for me? Thank you.
Schools within the district.
So at the core of our mission is to cultivate local agriculture, so food, growing food that can sustain communities and feed people. And, you know, most of the food that many students are eating in local schools are not necessarily grown in their communities, and it doesn't hold the nutrition density that they could have if it was local.
You know, it's high-quality, there's no pesticides or anything used. It's fresh. We pick it one day, and the kids eat it most likely the next day, if we process it here in this kitchen. So it's just the freshest and most nutritious product that we could provide our kids, so.
I operate a three-week cycle menu here, but with seasonal foods, especially produce, I just kind of adjust. So if it's lettuce right now, and we do a lot of salads, we're going to ramp up, hopefully next year, having salads more times during the week, especially if we start growing more here. But when it's strawberry season, we buy fresh strawberries. And when it's watermelons, you get watermelon the first couple of weeks of school, but you don't really get those in December. Oranges and apples, you know, we have more year-round. But the really local seasonal stuff, when it's available, we buy it and serve it, and it's in and it's out, and there's little waste, because the kids love it. We feed a lot of kids during the summertime, and they are our students, but they're just not in school. So we have served them just a cucumber cup, so sliced-up cucumbers, and they get their little ranch dressing, and the response was just phenomenal. One of our managers just specifically called to say those kids were talking about how crunchy those cucumbers were, and how delicious, and how healthy it tasted, because it was grown right here, and it just is so rewarding to see them enjoying things like that.
We do buy produce through the Farm-to-School Program and through Department of Defense, whatever we can, whatever's local. I know we buy local apples for our school meal program, and we buy a local lettuce to fill in the gap from what we don't produce here. So we do buy, and I have several vendors, and we're about to put our bid out for this year to see. And we'll probably do a little with each one, because none of them can supply the whole amount, and that does share the wealth in the area for the local farmers.
So Angela, before you move on to your action item, I think I know the answer, but I really want you to say it for the public. How many, how many school systems have farms in North Carolina?
One.
One more time?
One.
One, yeah. Absolutely amazing. Every time I see the reports that you give and everything, every time I see what we're doing in Gaston County Schools to provide healthy, fresh foods to our kids, it's absolutely amazing. So thank you for your hard work. I know I had the pleasure, several of us had the pleasure of attending your end-of-the-year dinner there the night, and it was wonderful, and, you know, you're truly leader in terms of you give the credit to your folks. But it does take somebody with vision and heart at the top to make sure it goes right. So thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you so much.
I'd like to.
One question. What is our fund balance? What is your fund balance? How much do you have?
How much do I have in the bank? $4,500,000.
That's a good amount.
I have one question. The sites where the summer food's going to be, where can our, where can people find...
So it's going to be posted on the website?
Okay.
I'm just finalizing this. Sean wants that list. He keeps asking me.
Okay, okay.
And then there's also a number that we post, that they can just call the number, and it gives you all the sites in the area.
Will it be on the main page, or do we have to go to the Nutrition Site?
I think, I believe it'll be on the main page.
Great, okay.
It usually is.
Angela, I want to commend you, you're doing a great job. I always love hearing from you, and as you can tell, I'm a food guy. I love food, especially salads. But you made a mention, and I'm just wondering, what is the threshold? You mentioned something about verifying incomes for... I just want to know, what's the...
It depends on family size.
That was my question.
Yes. There's no other factor, it's just family size and family income. So every person in the household's income is considered, but it's also how many people are in the household.
Okay, thank you so much.
It's a very simple application, and you can do it online in about less than five minutes.
No, I just was curious about, I was going to ask, how many, does it just one, or is it based on how many's in the family? And you just answered that.
Exactly.
Thank you for what you do. Keep up the good work. We're blessed to have someone like you in our system.
It's my pleasure.
Angela?
Yes, sir.
As we all pretty much come the other night, and you said you don't have turnover, I know why. You created a family, and they know you care about them, but also the enthusiasm they have is unbelievable. It's off the charts, like, it's contagious.
They're a great bunch.
And you can always stay, remember that.
I can always stay. Well, with that said, I wasn't going to say anything, but I want to thank you all for the support you've given me over the last eight years. I have loved this job. It has been rewarding, and it's been my distinct honor to serve here as Nutrition Director. So thank you.
We're the ones that have been rewarded.
We've been blessed. And the mac and cheese for Lee.
The yogurt.
So Angela, I just want to say, when we started kicking around this idea five or six years ago, it's interesting how your ability to lead and to stay with this program and this plan is incredible, and there are none other in the state, and I would venture to say, there are very few public schools that have a farm, that get the licensing, that have the facilities, that take the time to grow, pick, produce, and share these vegetables. So there's a lot of stories you could tell about lettuce that comes from California. Think of, think of the miles that that lettuce is not traveling, and the freshness of it. And it's more than paying for itself, and it will continue to do so, so.
And quality alone. I mean, I don't know if you remember, because we've gone back so many years, you know, the reason we started this was because the lettuce we were buying from California, and certain times of the year was so bad that we would throw half of it away.
Throw half of it away, that's right. So what I want to say is, that didn't just happen, that took leadership, and I appreciate you and all that you've done at School Nutrition.
I appreciate you, too.
Thank you. So we do need your action item, Angela. Do you have anything on your action item, or do you just...
It's on the consent, I think. No, it's not consent.
The action item is approval of the bids for 25-26 school year.
So we have a motion from Mr. Ramsey, second from Ms. Smith. Any discussion on the nutrition contracts? All in favor? See, and no opposition, that's unanimous. Item 13 is driver's education contract. I'd like to have a motion to approve that contract. Ms. Cherry, second. Mr. Ramsey, any discussion on the driver's ed contract?
I have one thing I would say, Chairman. Whoever, who do supervise this for us?
Mr. Duncan or somebody who supervises?
Yes, sir, that comes under Dr. Rebecca Powers and Chad Duncan.
Rebecca would mention to this company that, you know, they're a reflection of us. They need to make sure they're using their best manners. I've had a couple of parent complaints about, you know, being short with the parents. If you would make sure that you let these people know that, you know, and one of the reasons, we don't have one person for the contract, so it makes it pretty difficult on us. I wish there was some more competitiveness with it. But that being said, I'm ready to go.
Yes, sir, and I will follow up with that for sure.
Any other discussion on driver's ed contract? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. And the number, item 14 is the Substitute Staff Placement Services. We need a motion to approve that contract. Mr. Ramsey? Second, or Mr. Dedman, discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I was not in attendance when the E S S program was brought to the curriculum meeting, so therefore, I had to ask a lot of people a lot of questions. And I want to thank everybody who tried to fill me in, Dr. Hushard, Tanya Kells, Beth Suber, Gary Hoskins. I do appreciate everything. And what I tried to do was make a list of pros and cons, and I think there are many, many pros as far as being able to get a higher percentage of substitutes to go in and fill these jobs on a daily basis, because if they're not there, teachers do have to cover, or TAs in elementary schools do have to cover. There are many, many pros, and the one thing that I have trouble getting past is the amount of money it's going to cost for one-year contract. $300,000 is a lot of money, and I know they're offering a lot to the substitutes themselves. This particular company, it's my understanding, is going to offer benefits for the employees, and the employees can work five days a week, even if they're certified personnel, in lieu of 29 and a half hours a week, I understand that. But, you know, there's still things that we're trying to be able to come up with some money to pay certain things, like our mentors, and that is mandated by the state of North Carolina, having our new teachers, BT1s, 2s, and 3s, having a mentor, and just by jumping out and going into this contract for one year, that's the one holdback that I have, is the actual cost of a one-year contract.
Thank you, Ms. Loveless. Any additional comments?
Well, I'm in agreement with Ms., as we discussed, I don't know if she worded that correctly, but it's $300,000 more than what we are, or what we're paying now, correct? If I'm not correct?
It's, I think it's $300,000 more than what it currently costs us to do it in-house.
Yeah, that's the, that's the only question I have. Is there any way we can negotiate that to get a better deal? But with that, I'll leave it to that.
Any further discussion on the contract? Last call for discussion on the contract. All in favor approving the contract? All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is our consent agenda. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Ms. Smith? Mr. Dedman, on the second. Any discussion on the remaining items on the consent agenda? All in favor of the consent agenda? It's unanimous. Motion passes. At this point, it's time for our superintendent's comments. Dr. Hushard.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, it's good to be with you all tonight. It's hard to believe that the end of the 24-25 school year is almost here. Wednesday is the last day of school for students, and we want to thank everyone in Gaston County Schools' family for giving us a productive and successful year, and we hope everyone enjoys the summer break. We need to rest, because Wednesday, August 13th, the first day of school for students, will be here before we know it. Our graduation season for the class of 2025 begins tomorrow, such an exciting time and rewarding time for us. We have two ceremonies on Tuesday in the Meyer Center at Gaston College. The Gaston Early College High School Graduation Ceremony is at 3:00 PM, followed by the Gaston Early College High School of Medical Sciences. That ceremony is at 6:00 PM. Many of our early college students earned an associate's degree as well from Gaston College, so we are excited about that graduation and want to congratulate those students. Looking ahead to Wednesday, we have three more graduations. The Gaston Virtual Academy at 9:00 AM in the Meyer Center, again at Gaston College, Webb Street School at 11:00 AM in the school gymnasium, and then Warlock Academy at 2:00 PM on Wednesday, also in that school gymnasium. Then on Fri, then at Friday evening at 6 o'clock, we'll celebrate the class of 2025 from 10 of our traditional high schools with graduation ceremonies at their respective schools. This is a major celebration to recognize the accumulation of 12 to 13 years of work and dedication by our students, their families, and our school employees. What an exciting time of year for all of the Gaston County School family. Also, earlier this month, we held our Evening of Excellence Ceremony to recognize our educators and announce our of-the-year winners for the 2025-26 school year. It was an outstanding event. We rolled the red carpet out, and we would like to express our appreciation to Truist for sponsoring the ceremony again this year. We'd also like to thank the Gaston County Education Foundation and Courage Kia for their additional partnership support. Last Friday, our Gaston County Teacher of the Year for 25-26, John Ramos of Forest View High School, received his new Kia K4 from Courage Kia in Gastonia, and we are grateful for the general manager, Dan Ferry, who made this possible through our Teacher of the Year program. I also want to say thank you to our communications and all departments that supported this awesome event and celebration. It was a good night for Gaston County Schools. We want to remind everyone that Memorial Day is Monday, May 26, and our schools and central office buildings will be closed, as it's a holiday for all employees. We also want the public to know that we will implement our summer work schedule beginning Monday, July 2nd. Our schools and central offices will be open Monday through Thursday, 7:00 AM to 5:30 PM, and closed on Friday. The summer schedule will continue through Friday, August 1st.
It's a ten-hour workday.
June 2nd, sorry. Thank you. Ten-hour workday, yes. And Mr. Chairman, that completes my comments with a couple audits there. Sorry about that for this evening, and we will need a closed session meeting, please, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Hushard, and as always, thank you to the support that the community gives the board, and thank you for the board for the work we do. And as we close, I do have a few personal comments to the graduates. As you move on from Gaston County Schools, it is my sincere hope that we, along with your family and your community's support, have equipped you with the tools to succeed, no matter what you, what your goals. I'd like to offer a bit of advice. Find time to disconnect. Learn the power of silence. Give yourself more time than you think you need to truly step away. Stare at a campfire, sit on a beach, hike to a quiet place, spend time in silence and prayer. These moments will ground you. Surround yourself with three types of friends. A truth teller, someone who will challenge you when you are wrong and won't just affirm any idea you have, but will offer wise counsel. A confidant, someone who will tell you, that you can tell anything to, someone who listens with love and speaks with honesty. A ride-or-die, the kind of friend who, when you call them at 3:00 AM and say, "I need you," simply replies, "I'm on the way." Finally, model your life after that humble carpenter who lived a perfect life over 2,000 years ago. May God bless you and keep you, and may the Lord's mercy and grace be with you always. Congratulations to our graduate. Ms. Cherry, we need a closed session.
Amen. And you got it. Mr. Chair, we need a closed session under General, North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A3 and 6 for consultation with attorney and personnel.
The motion go in closed session. Ms. Smith, second, Mr. Ramsey, all in favor? We are in closed session.
We're now back in open session. Dr. Hushard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Board. I'd like to recommend the following individuals for a two-year Assistant Principal Contract: Holly Adams, Elizabeth Akins, Whitney Hill, Sidney McDaniel, Leah Summers, and Monica Schurr.
Do I have a motion to approve the contracts?
No.
Motion by Ms. Chair.
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith. Any discussion on the Assistant Principal Contracts? All in favor?
Thank you.
No opposition. That's approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, recommendation for two-year Principal Contracts. I recommend the following individuals: Kathleen DeAvery, Jennifer Lancaster, Tanya Morris, and Laura Stefaniac.
May I make mention that we approve that?
Motion by Ms. Chair. Second by Mr. Devin. Any discussion on the Principal Contracts? Hearing nothing. All in favor?
Thank you.
No opposition. That's approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, recommendation for two-year Principal Contracts. I recommend the following individuals: Kathleen DeAvery is assigned to Southwest Middle School, Jennifer Lancaster, the principal at Kaiser Elementary School, Tanya Morris, the principal at Robinson Elementary School, William Winston, principal at Holbrook Middle School, and then Laura Stefaniac, the principal at Carr Elementary School.
Thank you, sir. Anybody have any other business? Motion for Mr. Devin to adjourn. Second by Mr. Ramsey. All in favor?
Thank you all. Have a good night.